A regular meeting on Monday, March 1st. If everyone can please rise and say the Pledge allegiance of the flag.
Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to read our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public School students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. Having said that, I would like to take a moment of silence. We have had unfortunate passing of one of our high school students. So our thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends and the school community. If everyone can please take a moment. Thank you. At this time, we're going to open it up for the public forum. We have no one who has signed up previously. So if you wish to address the committee, please unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. And as a reminder, two things. One, if you are speaking, we only have a two-minute limit per person. And additionally, if anybody is planning to videotape, audiotape, or record this meeting, you need to announce yourselves now. As always, this meeting is being recorded by LATV. All right, having no one come forward to announce the recording, I'm opening up the public forum. If you wish to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi there. My name is Paula Hashig. My address is 98 Pheasant Run Circle, Leominster, Massachusetts. And I currently have a daughter in the Leominster Public School system and a couple more coming along. I just wanted to take the opportunity today to extend my thanks to the teachers and the leadership who've supported the remote model. Our family has personally found the teachers to be doing an outstanding job and hope they're recognized for that. I've been a more engaged parent because the kids are home and it's enhanced the bond between my daughter and I. I would like to make our family's position public and clear. We are desperately in need of the remote option to continue. We're not only for remote, we're for everybody, really, whatever options are needed for certain families. Excuse me, we're for that. Every family has a different circumstance and risks to weigh as they're doing the best that they can through all of this. And there's no one-size-fits-all model, at least from our opinion. And I've heard that there's others that come on here and speak for everyone when they want, when they say they want us all to go back. We want normal too. But unfortunately, our family circumstance doesn't allow that for us. If you don't have to worry about COVID coming into your home because there are sensitive populations there, you're truly blessed. The reality for our family is that we have an infant and we have two elderly people that I take care of, my parents, one who is immunocompromised due to cancer treatments. I ask for your compassion to push whatever pressures you're feeling aside to return the kids full-time and remove the remote model. And think of families like mine who are currently weighing life and death every single day, thinking about what we do and how it might come back to our house and how it could potentially take the life of our loved ones. I'll say it again, we want normal too, but not at the risk or not at the cost of our family's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Would anyone else like to address the committee? Kristin, if you're speaking to us, you're on mute. Yes, we can hear you now.
I'm Kristin Rankin from 1019 Main Street in Leominster. I stand with Paula and also have a sensitive part of my home where I'd like to keep the remote model as well as an option. I do want normalcy as well as Paula. However, right now is not the time. Waiting for vaccines to get out there and for people to be vaccinated so that normalcy can be actually normal. Keeping the children at home at this point is, needs to remain an option for families like mine and Paula's.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Yes, hi, this is Caitlin Volpe, 20, Shady Lane. To be clear, I stand with everyone to have a choice for whichever type of schooling works for their family. With that said, recently, one of the school committee members referred to the position as a burden. That committee, that comment was insensitive and disrespectful to everyone who has had a stake in the disastrous decision to begin the school year with zero in-person learning. The burden of that decision has been borne by the community, not the school committee majority voting to shut down our schools. The burden belongs to that of a mother who now needs to work overnights so she can be home during the day to support her kids with little to no sleep. A burden is a family who is struggling to pay the bills because of giving up day jobs to co-teach their children during the school day. A burden belongs to the teacher who had to completely reinvent education for 100% remote delivery. A burden is locking kids out of the building who needed to be there last fall and not allowing the students with the highest of needs an equitable education. A burden is explaining to our children that they can't go to school despite very low community transmission, causing them to feel sad and isolated. A burden is being a graduating high schooler and trying to compete against other graduates in the country who have been in in-person learning while you have been remote and not given the same opportunities. A burden is leaving work early and paying money for a babysitter in order to address this committee for the first time in person just to have committee members refuse to show up. Showing up to face your constituents is part of the burden of serving the school committee. A burden is having to attend these meetings to help our children's futures in any way possible just to see you ignore science surveys and what the people want. If members are going to quit being on this committee, then quit and leave. Please don't quit and stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? One final and last time, would anybody else like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Okay, having no one else come forward, we're closing the open portion of our meeting and we will be moving on to our next segment. Superintendent Communications?
There are no communications this evening.
Okay, we'll move right on to the superintendent report then, please.
Well, thank you. This one is a little lengthy, just there has been so much going on over the past month that I want to make sure that everybody's aware. As of today, we were in Week Two of having pre-K through 12 for the first time back in our buildings since March 13th. I have visited the buildings, I've seen students, I've seen teachers, all support staff, secretaries, administration. It just, it has felt really good, not without any kinks or any, you know, bumps in the road, but we're, we're there. We have been back into a hybrid mode for about three weeks now and we are watching very closely of our in-school incident rates. We also consider what's happening in the city, but we're really paying particular close attention to what's happening with our students and staff. But we are welcoming back students. Some are transitioning in every single day and there are others that are saying, you know what? At this time, I think I just want to stay home. So we have really two separate school systems running right now. We do have a full remote and we have a full hybrid. We're about 50/50 throughout the entire district of students that are in one setting or the other. So we're watching it closely. We will be talking to our families more and more to see who wants to come in because that does affect several of our factors. But everybody's welcome at any point in time. So it's been great seeing people again. The other piece is our sports started. So not only our spring, but our fall sports. I saw a picture of Doyle Field. I don't even want to know how they cleaned it off, but it's cleaned and ready to go. Our hope is, we had a really positive winter run, but we did not allow spectators in. Hopefully, with some of the outdoor sports, parents could now be able to see their children play. I have to say though, many learned technology on YouTube, on Facebook, anything to help others see their children participate in sports. And the teams are full right now and they're ready to go. So as soon as we can have spectators, you know that we will be celebrating that. Also, I put in the Sunday message, the P E B T cards. These are pandemic cards. They're for free and reduced students. There are two ways to communicate whether you are eligible for those amounts of money at this time. In Sunday's message, I left a phone number, which was 1-877-328-2363. Or there is a website, D-A-T-connect.com/pet. These funds are available to many of our families and some have not taken advantage of them. If you have any questions, whether you do qualify, try the phone number or the website. You can refer back to the Sunday message for those sites, but make sure that you're using the money wisely and that you are eligible for it. So, and if you have further questions, please call our Parent Information Center hotline. Reminder that there is no school on March 9th. This is a professional development day for teachers. We have yet another pretty out-there presentation and all of our staff will be working on the social-emotional well-being, not only of our students, but for themselves and our families as well. So remember, there is no school. It's a Tuesday, March 9th. Also, it has been brought to my attention that we on our website have quite a few references for families. If you need any information, whether it's COVID, you need assistance, you need support, you need mental health, there is a tab under the Health that has links and plenty of resources. We update it as quickly and as often as possible to help people who are going through very difficult times. If you struggle to see or find this on our website, it can be overwhelming at times. There's so much information coming out so quickly. Don't hesitate to call one of your building administrators and they'll help walk you through that. We were also very excited, in a strange way, last week to say that we have offered free COVID testing for our staff. Every Wednesday from 2:30 to 5:30, our staff, it's just another step in the right direction to say, we want our people in. We want everyone healthy, we're taking care of our business. And so we had quite a few members go. Many of us will be there again this Wednesday. It's a step in the right direction. And so we're hoping that, we have almost 1,000 employees that can take advantage of this, so please do. They have a link, they know which schools they're attached to and which sites that they can attend. And this is every Wednesday and it's available to all staff. The other piece is, we've had several LPAC and these are English Language Learner Parent Advisory Council and our CPAC, that's our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. They've had meetings more often than not this year and they have been bringing presentations forward that have been requested from families and very, very informative. If there is a meeting on March 11th for the LPAC, a flyer will be going out. If it's something that suits your family, don't hesitate. Jump on, it's all on Zoom. Invitations are out there and they're for every student. So what's good for one is usually good for all. So please, these are resources that we're trying to get out to families as quickly and as easily as possible. And speaking of taking care of our families, tomorrow's going to be an extremely cold day. If you haven't seen the wind chills, you may want to make sure that your children are wrapped up really tight. If it's their day to be in hybrid learning, be very careful. Wind chills in double digits below zero, that's dangerous. So make sure that the health and well-being of your child is taken care of. And lastly, I want to thank the community for those who were able to join us to see Dr. Brown. Dr. Brown is one of the leading presenters in education and he has been featured on Good Morning America, Fox News, MSNBC. He's just everywhere. He came and worked with our staff last February through a very difficult time. He came back again just last month to work with our staff and it was staff requested. And one of the pieces of feedback that we received was that he would be wonderful for our community. And so we had hundreds of people attend our community forum this week. And his message, it's, it's one, it's just one message, but it's the beginning. He really speaks about equity and how to provide for all and how to take care of each and every one of us in the right way. And so I want to thank him for staying with us as a community and any of you that were able to be a part of it. And overall, just thanks to everyone right now. I know it's difficult, but I have to say thank you for your patience, your flexibility, and most importantly, your trust. And please know that we're doing everything we can to get our schools fully open when it's the right time. So I appreciate that.
Great, anything else superintendent, under the report?
No, I think that's it. We've been very busy.
I can only imagine. All right, we're going to move on to our presentations.
Great.
Again, this is something that I'm sure will be very enlightening to everyone.
So this, we're calling the state of the district. Right, so here we are, it's March 1st. By the way, happy March, everybody. I would say as a school department, we pretty much have seen it all this year. And every time you think that you've just gotten there and you've solidified something, something else gets thrown out. We're celebrating being back into a hybrid. So we were a hybrid up right before the holidays. We closed at the right time and we reopened at the right time. Our city's doing a tremendous job. We went from a positivity rate of 14.15. Last Thursday, we're down to 4.6. That's, that's the right thing. And so we're celebrating and we see students. We have all grade levels in right now. And last week, there was an announcement through the Commissioner and Governor Baker about a possible full reopening the first week of April. I do say possible because the Commissioner of Education needs to call for an emergency meeting in which to get the power to do that. The typical meeting is at the very end of March. I believe it's March 28th, which would give us no time. So we're planning for whatever scenario happens, but we don't want to say for sure what will happen. Because if this is not voted in, we have to come back and look at our community and see what will work for us. There is an initial elementary focus, but middle and high school are right behind. We're trying to get our littlest customers in as quickly as possible and we're doing a pretty good job right now. And we're awaiting news. Guidance changes day to day. You'll hear tonight, transportation guidance completely changed. Health guidance, it has gone from quarantining for 14 days, we're down to 10 days. People are starting to be vaccinated. So there is a lot that is happening for us. We do believe at this time that there will continue to be a remote option through this June. So that's really important. Many of our families reached out and said, I want to stay remote. This is what was working. So Commissioner Riley has said that this is where we're at. So tonight's presentation is to sort of say, okay, we've come this far. This is where we're headed. We have some projections. We're not holding to dates or timelines. Anything can happen. But I have to say, whatever does happen, Leominster Public Schools will be ready for this. So each one of the departments this evening wants to give you an update and let you know where they're at. As this information becomes available to us, we will be notifying the public immediately because families do need to plan for this. Transportation needs to plan for this. Food service needs to plan for this. Teachers need to plan for this. So the second we know, you will know. So I would like to start with, I believe it's Dr. Riley.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. In terms of human resources, we really have three primary issues we've been working on most recently. The first is our staff accommodations. As we've reported before, initially, we started with over 150 requests for accommodations from our staff. With the expansion of in-person learning at the high school, grades 10, 11, 12 returning in addition to the freshmen, we had another round of meetings with teachers because most of our accommodations were granted until or unless students were returning to the classroom. Most of our teachers were ready and were right back to work. We did have a few that had lingering health concerns that we would meet with or particular instances where we would need to legally meet their accommodations and we've done so. By and large, all of our staff are back in working with the kids in person. We'll continue to monitor. I think as we get towards vaccination, I would anticipate close to 100% of our teachers at all levels being able to return. But it's important that we go through a process where they feel supported, they can be healthy and safe. And we do what we need to do as a district to make sure we have live teachers in front of our kids when they come into our schools. And so that's primarily what we've been working on most recently in terms of our accommodations. And I think we're really in good shape. You know, the number of leaves that we've granted for the entire year are actually quite small, certainly less than 10. And so we're really happy with the way that process has worked out. Thank you to the teachers for their flexibility and for the union's support in us creating what we thought was a fair and viable process. The other thing we've been working on in HR, really as an entire cabinet, is our plan for full return staffing. This past week, we met with every single principal with the entire cabinet to look at their staffing needs when we return in full. And so a lot of these conversations looked at standard things we'd look at every year, the number of sections that you require at a particular grade level to make sure we have appropriate class sizes. We also looked at universal returns that were going to happen regardless. For example, the district will have full staffing around our specialists next year. We will have art, we will have music, we will have phys ed. And these things will happen in their traditional complement as long as it's approved and the guidelines are safe. They will be in-person in all of our schools and all of our schools will be fully staffed in those areas. Some of the staffing decisions may be unique to particular schools. So we also talked to principals about what their particular needs may be in anticipation to students returning in full. And so those, we're starting to look at those requests, look at the data that we've asked principals to supply us to make those decisions. And we feel like in the budget process, we'll have a really good sense of what type of staffing we're going to need next year or whenever we turn full. And then also the associated costs with that type of plan. Finally, we've also been looking about what might need to happen at the end of the school year and as we transition into a new one. One of the things that we haven't talked a whole lot about is the number of teachers who are willing, particularly our professional status teachers who took on positions perhaps under a secondary license. And then there are some too, who are willing to actually change programs and work in another school. We're going to do our best with those professionally status teachers, teachers who have, you know, earned a good reputation, great reputation in the district and have put their time in with us to get them back to their home school, if at all possible, and them operating under their original license. An example might be a phys ed teacher who had a secondary license in health and has been teaching that special for us and done a great job. But we'd love to get those folks back to their original position and their original home, acknowledging that they're all part and important part of each of their school's culture and that if we can get them back to the position that they originally applied for and operating under their primary license, that's what's going to be best for them and most especially, that's what's going to be best for our students. So those are the big-ticket items that we've been working on in HR. I know our intent is to go through this entire presentation, but if at the end you have any questions specific to HR, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. At this time, Renee Costa is going to talk to us a little bit about our English language learners.
Good evening. Our English language learners, we currently are about 50% hybrid, 50% remote with our current ELLs that we are servicing in the Leominster Public Schools. Our ELL home language, at this time, we have 29 different languages within the Leominster Public Schools. Spanish still is the most prominent language of our Ls with our Portuguese has increased by 28% since 2019. And Twee is still our third language of incidents there. Our parent liaisons this year, we increased their hours to full-time due to the demands of the needed communication with our ELL families and during the pandemic time for our remote learners. And we continue to need that as we move forward. So we will be looking at that for the future. Due to the above information around this Portuguese speaking, our staff and our, our staff and principals are looking to increase our Portuguese translators. So if you know anybody who speaks Portuguese and is willing to come in and help out, we are, we've had this job posted for a while for our bilingual paras. We are definitely in need of that. And we need some more Spanish translators too. So if there's anybody out there who would like to have a job as a para to help with those transitions with our students and to help with the language piece of it, that would be greatly appreciated if you want to send a resume to HR. We will definitely get in touch with you. Our bilingual staff is needed also. As we looked at our numbers and as we look at our staff, we really do need to increase our staff, especially at the high school. The high school is growing in population around our L students. And when they come in, they are our highest levels, ones and twos. And so we are looking for ESL bilingual teachers, specifically at the high school and middle school. So that would be also another position that if you guys know anybody and they want to send me their resume, we are looking for anyone bilingual in this staffing needs. Access testing, the state is going through with our access testing. This is, this is per the federal government. So we are starting our testing with our hybrid students on March 22nd. So they have divided their cohorts one and two into testing sessions through April 15th. So they are going to, they've already submitted their schedules. You will be getting a notification of that as parents to make sure that your kids are there on the days that they are supposed to be for testing. That will only help with as least make up days as possible. Because as you know, if our return for full comes back in, we will have some more students to be adding to that. After April vacation, you will be contacted around our remote students coming in to take the access test. So we are looking for some of our parents to be really, I guess, looking for our parents to bring our students in to a safe and following all protocols place where they will be tested within the school and to have access testing two days. First day will be reading and writing and the second day will be speaking and listening. That again, will be also very important for all parents to provide that information for our students when there's a good days when they are sent out an invite around that and to make sure that we really work hard as a district to get students there. Once again, our LPAC, we can't say, I cannot say enough about our LPAC. Our LPAC is for English Language Parent Advisory Council. They work hand-in-hand with Paula and I. They want to do anything they possibly can to help families and students of our Ls in any way they can. So they come and they advocate for what their needs are. Once again, they have a meeting on March 11th at 6:30. If you are interested in even just listening, please send an email to thelpac@lemonsterschools.org and they will send you the link that you can participate in this meeting. It is also translated in the, in the different language that's necessary for you to understand. At this time, that's all I have. Once again, we are definitely need increasing of our bilingual staff. So if you know of anybody who is bilingual, please have them send their resume to us. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's Jenny Mundie. Nice to see you all. So I'm just reviewing the Parent Information Center and we are super busy. It's that time of year anyway when we're busy, but the pandemic certainly hasn't slowed us down. As Renee said, we are receiving students from all over the world, Ghana, Mexico, Kenya, you name it. And because of the collaboration with the L department, with Alessandra and Dr. Cuevas, Ms. Tina and Ms. Johanna, we have Portuguese and Spanish-speaking staff. And so it's been really helpful. We've been able to service many of our families. We are enrolling students every day. We are enrolling students every day. We're dealing with school choice, bus questions, school questions, lunch application questions. So we have families reaching out on a daily basis. And then if we're not able to answer them, we'll connect them with the right people. And in regards to lunch applications, we are, we highly recommend for all of our preschool. And middle school and high school students to still complete these lunch applications regardless if you're hybrid or remote. It will help determine the status that you are. You can find it on our website and if you have any questions at all, Ms. Tina, she's the guru of it. She's at extension one three five two. But you can reach out to any of us and we will connect you. And so you can send your completed lunch applications in to either the Parent Information Center or your school building and they will get it to us. And last but not least. It's that time of year again and kindergarten registration is happening. We started February first. It's a rolling admission, so you're not late if you haven't started. If your child will be five before August thirty-first this year, you have the ability to enroll them. And we welcome you. The question will, is often asked about where my child will be placed and we know that this can be bittersweet for many of our families. And so at this point, it's still about where you live and the address, but we do have overflow schools. Priest Street Elementary School is an all K school. And then also Francis Drake. We do try to accommodate all of our families' needs as best we can. Some of the other questions that have been coming up have been about the screenings. This past year, it ended up being a little bit different where we didn't do it last spring. We actually did it in the buildings in the fall time, which ended up working out okay. We're working with the early childhood staff and Margaret and Andy Pinnio along with Head Start staff. So we can make sure we get as many students as possible to enroll with us for kindergarten. And then as the guidance changes, and if it does, as Paula has said. Then we will certainly revisit what our screenings will look like. But at this point in time, it looks like it will be happening in the fall in the buildings as we did it this past year. So if you have any other questions at all, please feel free to call us. We're at the main number and we have our extensions up there. Ms. Tina's extension one three five two. Johanna is one three zero six and I am one three five six. And then you could also email us as well. Thank you. And the next presenter would be Ms. Kim Woodford for Special Education.
Hello, everybody. Happy March. I'm going to give you a little special update. As you know, our department's always busy, so we always have something to talk about. So right now, all of our sub-separate programs are open. Four days a week, our early childhood program is expanding its options as we're looking at. The projected three-year-olds of students with disabilities that are coming into the district. I think we started the year off knowing that we would have about sixty-five meetings to determine if students needed programming. So this is a time of year where it's not unusual for us to be expanding those programs and looking to see what students' needs are. Last spring, we completed our self-study in preparation of our special education audit. And some of you who have been on the school committee for a while probably remember it used to be called the Coordinator Program Review, the CPR. And it's changed its name to Tier Focused Monitoring. And it's an opportunity for the district to look at our schools and look at special education's procedures. And also look at civil rights in the district. And so the self-study sort of gives the Department of Ed an idea about how we're doing and what some of the resources are that we have in our district. And so that's the first part of it. The second part of it is to get some feedback from the community. So the Department of Ed is going to be hosting a parent orientation on March sixteenth. So I'll be sending out a link so that people can sign up for that. And it doesn't just have to be parents to sign up. Anybody who's interested in hearing more about what the district's going to be. Or what the department is going to be looking for can join us. And so that link will be posted on our website and an email will be going out to everyone, letting them know how to sign up. So the parent orientation is also an opportunity for the department to talk about the survey that they're going to be sending out. That will be going out to families. And that survey will be shared with all of us, the results of that. Then they're coming to us on April fifth for an entire week. They'll be at the district, they'll be going through our files, they'll let us know in advance what they're going to be looking for. They'll be doing some interviews. They'll probably be interviewing some parents, they'll be interviewing the CPAC. I know that they're going to want to meet with some principals. There's a possibility that they might want to speak with some staff too. So it's just an opportunity for them to take a deeper dive into how our district works. And are we really using those procedures that we're sharing with them? I've been working with CPAC. We're starting to develop a calendar. The group is being very, very thoughtful about identifying workshops in all disability areas and all ages of students. As we know, you know, there might be some transition workshops and that's going to be really focusing on students fourteen to twenty-two. But then we also want to make sure that we're putting some workshops out there that are for families of young children. So I think that the CPAC is doing a really nice job trying to think about all of our families in the community. And they will be looking for some feedback too from families in regards to what they're looking for. So it, it feels like it's going to be a pretty robust calendar. May fifth, our MCAS portfolios are going to be due, they're usually due in April. So they're giving us a little bit of an extension, which is appreciated. If your child is participating in the alternative MCAS. You're going to be hearing from your special education liaison. We always like to give parents an opportunity to put their eyes on the portfolio before we submit it to the Department of Ed. And so we'll be doing that virtually with families. It's been pretty challenging to be able to get the portfolios done remotely. They're challenging to do in the, just to begin with. I'm really proud of our staff. They've been helping each other. We have resources in the community where we have special ed teachers who are leaders in all MCAS. And they have been providing their time and their expertise to a lot of our new staff who's doing this for the first time. So if they can do this for the first time in their position, they're going to be able to do anything. So we're really proud of them for taking on this endeavor and doing, being so thoughtful about it. So we will appreciate parents' input. And I think it's a nice opportunity to have some dialogue too about, you know, the data that's in there and making decisions about next steps for your child. So I appreciate and thank you in advance for participating. And so I think we're moving on to Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to open by just thanking the support from the superintendent and the cabinet. For allocating the use of local monies and grant funds. And then as long, as well as the mayor through the city cares money. We were able to really significantly handle the technology requests in the spring and in the fall. For remote and hybrid learning. And as you know, we've talked about this before, there were a lot. There were a lot of things from webcams to document cameras to Chromebooks, to teacher laptops, to student laptops. And so there was a lot of planning and then a lot of financial obligations that we, as a city, were able to meet. And so I want to thank everyone for that. And all of our orders are now in and we're in the process of distributing and then building a new inventory management system. Due to, in the past, we had different inventory management systems that were school-based. Now we're centralizing those. And thanks to, thanks to the help of Kyle White, who's our district-wide technician. He's developed and improved method for inventory management. And so shortly they'll be totally up and running. And it will allow us to better track inventory with so many devices. And the devices are no longer just being kept in our buildings, they're in homes. And sometimes, you know, at Grandma and Grandpa's house, as the student, as the student is using the devices. At, at daycares and, and like I said, grandparents' houses. And, and it's hopeful once it's, we're fully up and running, that we'll be able to analyze those numbers in real time. And so in the future, school committee meeting, I'll give a report of our devices and, and how we're doing with that. But that's an exciting place to be. I'm going to talk a little bit about MCAS for a minute. MCAS, the, the state is going forward with MCAS, just like they are with access testing. And so we're currently training admin and school staff for the spring testing season. And this is based on a January DESI update. And so the testing window right now stands for May third to June fourth, that's at the high school. And then grades three to eight is pretty close to those dates as well. There's been a modification to the competency determination similar to last year. So that's not something that we, we are worried about. So that worked out well for our students in this, in the, in this past graduation. And so we're hopeful again that that will work out well for us. One of the things this year for grades three through eight, there'll be a shortened testing time. So in the past, there may have been three, four days of a particular subject testing. And that's going to be cut down to maybe one day for that subject. So students and families are going to notice the difference. And then another difference for MCAS, there'll be no, there'll be an accountability relief. And so they won't be ranking districts and schools based on MCAS data. And so they'll be using the MCAS data more to check in on students. And see how their level has progressed since the last time they were tested. Recently, the federal government sent out a notice that allowed states to modify the testing. And Massachusetts already did by some of those things I just spoke about, by doing some of those things. And so Massachusetts already took advantage of that modification. There's a few other things that the state could do, to decide to do. So we're waiting for further updates before we really are gung ho with MCAS. But right now that is where we stand and we're just looking for further DESI guidance. And then staffing, we're excited in the technology department. I believe it was at one of the meetings earlier this year that one of the committee members asked. You know, how are you doing in terms of handling the increase in technology? And I said, well, right now we're, we're handling it and we'll look to the future if we need more. And so we did, we did look at our, our ticketing system, which we have one for students and families and we have one for staff. And the volume there, as you can imagine, is, is really high. We've also, so we have been able to increase our staffing. So we've increased by two positions recently and we're excited to be able to do that. So at the building level, you should be able to see a little bit quicker response. And we should be able to have more capacity just in terms of our technology in the district. And so it should allow us to meet the needs of both students and staff better. Due to the increase in, just a huge increase in the number of devices. So now I'm going to turn it over to Melanie Michaels and she will talk about transportation.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Steve. This is Melanie Michaels from the business office and I'm going to just give you a quick update on our transportation. It's been one full week since all of the grade levels have been back in the schools. And I'm happy to report the transportation has gone well. I, I want to say I thank the staff at First Student who has certainly been working tirelessly and diligently with us. To make that a possibility. We're working with families and schools to address any individual concerns and will continue to do so. As we've seen throughout this last year, things change often and that is no exception today. DESI, on February eleventh, DESI sent out new guidance for transportation with the goal. Of returning as many students as possible to in-person school settings. The, as a district, we are reviewing all of the updated guidance. And we're working with the bus company to provide additional routes to support as many students as possible. The specifics on the guidelines are posted on the front page of our district's website. If anybody should want to go ahead and read the details on that. We ask that you allow everybody the opportunity to make changes as more and more students return to the schools. If you have any transportation questions, please feel free to contact the email listed on the, on the page here. Transportation@lemmonsterschools.org and someone will respond to you very quickly. I thank you for your time and with that, I'll send the presentation back to our superintendent, Paula Deacon.
Thanks. Well, I want to thank everyone for their part in this presentation. As you can see, there are so many moving parts. And back in the fall and over the summer, as a district, we had to plan three independent plans. A remote plan, a hybrid plan and a full end plan. It looks like this year we are going to be able to enact all of them maybe. But the guidance does change. So we're constantly on pins and needles thinking about when are we going to pivot and which direction are we going in? So as, I, I just want to reiterate, as soon as we know which way the state's going, we're going to follow suit. We're in a great place today. We, it's only been a week. We feel super with the safety nets that we have in place and the guidelines. Everything is posted. Anything that you need to question is on our site. It's one of those, if you can't sleep one night, just download them and you'll be out in about two seconds. So stay with us, keep your fingers crossed and we're going to continue to move forward. We're excited that we're in the position that we're at right now. We encourage our families to come in and be a part of the day-to-day in-person learning. And, and if you can't, we're going to support you. This is, this is the true meaning of personal, personalized learning. Lemmonster has done a fantastic job with that. We have looked at student needs and placed those in the forefront and we will continue to do so. And as we're instructed, we will read guidance, we will listen to the governor and the commissioner. And we will have all options in place, but you will be notified and our families will be notified as well. So if anyone has any question for any member of my cabinet, they're available. Please feel free.
The individual school committee members to see if they have any questions. Ron, do you would like to go first, please?
Yeah, the question I have is, I can't remember if it was James or somebody was mentioning about the kindergarten. Would they be able to say what's the increase in the kindergarten?
The enrollment number, Ron?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, we, we monitor that throughout. We know that we had a decrease this current year. We were down about a hundred students. We are planning for a full return. Jen monitors the numbers as they come in. Like we said, we just started February first with the kindergarten registrations. It's probably our busiest registration coming in right now. Parents are very excited for kindergarten. So we will provide you an update when we have those numbers more clearly because it is just the start.
Okay. The other question I had written down here, the outflow. You, I wrote it down, Priest Street and Francis Drake. What's the maximum that Priest Street can take for an outflow? And the same thing with Francis Drake and have you made any, is there anything built in so that if those get full, what happens?
Jen, do you want to take that?
Sure. So we're always looking at the numbers, Ronnie. And so it really depends on how many classrooms each building has, which then is dependent on how many kids that they're able to take. So I do know that within the last couple of years, so we'll say that Priest and Francis Drake are both overflow schools. But what we've also tried to do is a lot of our students that attend JA, Johnny Appleseed for kindergarten. We try to take those students out of Priest to make more room for other students such as, you know, Northwest, for example. So there are always, it's a lot of moving parts. So there are always, it's a lot of moving parts and up until really June. And then we kind of reassess throughout the summer depending on how many students have enrolled thus far.
Okay, you want to know the question?
Yes, Jim, please.
And so Jenny, I was going to tell Ron, Ron, we actually, this is something we discussed in our meetings this past week. And we have the ability to add between two and three kindergartens at Priest Street if we needed to. So we're really in good, good shape if there's a increase in kindergarten students coming into next year. And so just to add that piece of information as well.
Okay, the only other question I had is, I asked about kindergarten and whoever had that that thing showing up, it was combination kindergarten preschool, I believe. Is there, are there any numbers on that? Are they projected numbers?
So I had kindergarten and then part of that was the screening.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted.
If that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
How was the, how was the screening? Is it more this year versus last year or what, what are your projections?
So the screenings are connected to the students that enroll for kindergarten. So as, as the superintendent said, where we had just, we basically just started February 1st. So our numbers are certainly growing for kindergarten. So we can certainly, maybe even at the next meeting, I can give you an update as to how many students we have for kindergarten. But each student that's enrolled will have a screening attached to them, whether it happens in the buildings in the fall, depending on the guidance. But every student coming into kindergarten will have a screening. Does that make sense?
That's good. Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you. The other thing about the, about the LPAC, I got that little note here about the LPAC is, is I just bit my tongue. Is Paula in or Eileen and or somebody going to send it to us if we want to attend those, the LPAC? And what was that other one you were talking about, the?
CPAC.
CPAC and LPAC, if we want to attend it or just listen?
Yep.
If it's possible, please?
I can shoot those out. That's no problem.
Okay, thanks.
We've had some very nice presentations the last few meetings.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Ron. Brandon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you for all of this information. It was a lot, but I really appreciate it. Just to kind of reiterate on Ron's point, I was going to ask pretty much the same question regarding kindergarten. So an update on that would be awesome. And the other ask I would have is on the enrollment reports we get, I don't know if it's possible, but to show the change since the last one. Because I was trying to look for, you know, what what was different, so I just wanted to bring that up at the same time. But for the superintendent, at this point, do you expect or have you gotten updated guidance from D E S I regarding that open in April? Or do you expect to get changes from them?
Do I expect to get changes? Yes. Just because that's been the name of the game. So the commissioner has to call for an emergency meeting. If, and he wanted to have that by next week, so that would give school departments enough time to prepare. If not, his, his meeting is usually the end of every month, so March 29th, it's too late. I have not heard a word yet if he has called for that emergency meeting. But there is a meeting of all superintendents on Friday to discuss this.
Okay.
Weekly, he tries to update us and he is asking for a little bit of feedback. So we'll see where it goes.
So my concern is just if he changes something drastically and there's new supplies that the district needs to buy or whatever it may be.
Yep.
I'm, I'm worried that it's going to turn into like the Chromebook situation where every vendor is getting blasted with the requests that the district need. And then we're eight to 10 weeks out on that actual need. So I know you're, I know you're probably already thinking about that, but I just wanted to vocalize it. And then I guess the only other question or request that I would have is Jim talked about staffing regarding the full return and how it's kind of in the talks right now. And I just hope that we'll get an update on kind of where we're at and what we need to be set to go, whether that's the first week of April or whenever, you know, it's decided.
We'll be prepared for that.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Hi, how are you? So I had a question that's actually very similar to Brandon's. And then I put in a request for maybe more information. I'm concerned about space in classrooms if there is a full return anticipated. We don't, we're predicting the future, but in preparing for that, I'm concerned that some of our current classroom allocations may not fit all of the kids that are assigned to those classrooms. And I'm, so I'm wondering if there's been as part of the, I guess, planning for materials, as Brandon was saying, like discussion of like outdoor space for tents or for cafeteria space. If kids are now limited in being able to eat in their classrooms. April, hopefully weather will be better soon, so if that's an option. And then also, I had sent an email and again, it's all based on predicting the future. But I think for parents to be able to see like what the physical classroom looks like, if kids are going to be at three feet or six feet, that might help in some of their decision-making. You know, as a parent who chose hybrid at six feet apart, your decision may change if now everyone is going back at once and they're going to be at three feet. So I think just again, being able to, when we have information, being able to plan for as many different outdoor spaces and like portables and all those different things that we may need.
Yes. Thank you. We have been talking about that. It is so important that families make sure that they're staying in contact with their building administration. Just because we want to know how many students would be returning for a full return. As you heard tonight, we do have 50% of our families that are still in a remote setting and they will have the option to stay there. So there's so many pieces. We've looked at it from a full, full, full return to a 50/50 return. Storage is an option. We've talked about having intervention groups in the gym. So we need to clear our bins out of all the overflow furniture. There's so many, there's so many pieces to this. So that's why we, we need the information sooner rather than later.
Right. And then on the flip side, I've heard high school parents who are like, I'm not sending them for one day. But if they increase to two or three days, then that may change and I might want to send them back. So, you know. And you know, roll your dice and see what, where we land.
And we're looking at those pieces as well. You know, there's some other programs. Right now the focus is on elementary through the state lens, but we're looking at our other programs and the high school is already talking about that. So we've already begun discussions, though, though the, the elementary might be a state mandate, we might choose to go further with it, depending where we're at. So we're looking at all those avenues as well. Tents are not out of the realm. So it'll be interesting. Pray for good weather.
All right, Sue?
Okay, I, I would just like to put a plug in for a good friend of mine works at Pittsburgh State and she does the evaluation of the student teachers. And she passed on to me that she was totally impressed with the technology in the Lemonster Public Schools. She had two, two grandchildren that used to go to Francis Drake and they moved last year during COVID to the Wachusett Regional District. Totally not happy with them. And she's had the experience of going into many other school districts. So I definitely want to compliment you on the, you know, she, she said, I have the opportunity to see what other districts do and I think Lemonster is really doing a great job. On the technology, she said, she's had the advantage of specifically Johnny Appleseed. I guess there are a couple of student teachers there, so she sat in on their lessons. She said the technology, there's no echo on the screen, a seamless switch back and forth to the Google platform. So I just wanted to pass that on. So congratulations.
Oh, thank you. It's nice to hear that.
Great. Thank you, Sue. Mike, do you have any questions or comments?
Some of my questions have been addressed already. I have one small request. When we are sending our children in for an in-person day, we're supposed to send the, what's the name of it? The assessment form. We've received multiple emails reminding us of that. It would be really helpful if anytime we get an email to remind us of that, if a copy of the form was attached to that email, because it's been a little hard to find the form. So just, we can get that attached to the email. We go, oh yeah, we could print a copy and, or print a bunch of copies right there. It'd simplify things.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion. We also moved it to the front of our website page in the three language. So parents didn't have to go so far into one of the tabs. So it's right on the forefront as well if people know to go there, but yes, I'll give that to administrators.
Or if you don't want to, you know, just a link to that would be useful if it's
Perfect.
either a link, a link to that spot, so we can just click the email and get there or attach it. Just make it easier on people to find it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Isabel, you're up next.
I'm great. So this presentation was super comprehensive. I guess the questions I have are more related to what potentially is coming in April per the commissioner. Because I think that has left many of us in communities with unknowns. Obviously, it's depending on the vote that gets brought forth to the Board of Education. But are you anticipating, and you've had far more conversations just as a superintendent with the commissioner than I have, I've had absolutely zero. But are you anticipating this to be, if they do vote for a full in-person return? Are you anticipating for it to be a mandate? Because I do know that the commissioner has put out guidance in the past on reopening and also has said districts are up to their own discretion and then has also slammed districts for making decisions and said they are going to be facing an audit or withheld withholding of funds. And so not that we wouldn't be abiding by the commissioner's recommendations or guidances, to say the least. I'm just curious if you have any insight on, on that. Because there was also talk of no remote option and now there is talk of a remote option, which I'm really, really happy to hear. But it seems like things are changing daily, as I'm sure we all know it does. And I'm sure it will change come the vote time, but if you have any insight on that, it would be helpful.
I, I think at this time, it's more of a feeling and listening to the conversations. I think if he gets the, the executive power to make this call, it feels more mandated.
Okay.
There are some waiver processes that you can go through if you need to stay remote because you're still in a high-risk community. Our community has dropped almost a full 10%. So we've been doing the right things. We're no longer a high-risk community. So I don't know if that would be in our best interest. He's only had the one conversation so far with us besides his letter. But it feels more, more of a mandate for the elementary. So we're prepared for that.
That makes sense. I didn't know if he was putting out guidance that districts should be abiding by as he did in earlier parts of the pandemic. And then we make our decisions and then he slams it again. So just, that's super helpful. And then also just maybe this is more of a suggestion and maybe helpful hint or tool. But I know with the possible full in-person return, many parents and also educators are a little uneasy with the return before the vaccination of educators gets fully underway. And so not that I have a resolution here, but I know there was talk in the past of potentially using the high school as a back site. And I think that's now no longer the case if there's a full in-person return or just even the hybrid model at the high school. So is it possible potentially for you or Kathy Goddard to work with surrounding districts to maybe put together something like that? Because I know supply and demand is super, super limited. But if we want to get our kids back in the building for as much time as we can, certainly think that our teachers should be vaccinated and, and quickly. And I know everyone just across the board is struggling to even get an appointment. But I think it should be prioritized and maybe working with the Board of Health. And like, I know there's like this regional type of coalition that's, that's being spearheaded by Steve Curry and Chris Knuth here in this area. So that might be something to look into. Just, just a suggestion. I'm not saying like we're making miracles happen here, but.
I wish we could make a miracle happen. Yeah, so I know the city is working really hard on making that happen for everyone. And Kathy does call as often as possible. And whatever we can do, we've talked to our, our teachers as well. Anyone that is a veteran is able to go down to Bedford and we will teachers go. I might have to cover a social studies class or a math class, whatever it's going to take for people to have to go get the vaccination if they want it. We will be in full support of that. So we have been trying to send out notices, anything that we can do to help. People are finding ways around it and I would love for us to have our own. But we're going to work with the city and so if that, that could happen, whatever they need, we're in full support.
That would be wonderful. I know having this testing capability now is, is game changing. And so vaccinations are next step, I think, in the process to end, end this virus a little bit and get back to normal as best we can. So just wanted to throw that out there too. Because there's many educators across this community and in the surrounding area that I'm sure can't wait to get a needle in their arm. Because I can't. So I feel, I feel it.
I know, I know. I feel the same way.
All right. Thank you. Peter, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have one additional question. Thank you for the presentation. I guess Renee Koska. During your portion, you had mentioned that we're seeing, we have, you know, need for some bilingual, particularly for Spanish and Portuguese. And we saw the, you know, 28% increase in the need for, in Portuguese-speaking students. Does that seem like it's a, is this part of a longer trend? And, and, you know, we need to, as we're going into next year, you know, anticipate that? Or is this, that 28% increase is kind of a one-off where we suddenly saw, you know, a jump in that population?
It's a good question, Peter. In the last three years, we have jumped almost 62 students that are Portuguese. So we're assuming the trends and they continue growing. And we see that growing each year. So, and a lot of our principals have basically voiced in their budget hearings is that, that most, the most difficult time we're having right now is to translate, is to communicate with our Portuguese families. Because of the lack of translators, I do have, I have one that's in the PIC Center. And I only have one that's part-time at the high school who's on maternity leave also. So, but it's also the hardest language for us to get anyone to volunteer to come and help us. And it's not volunteer, we'll pay them. But we've looked at every possibility. I mean, I even said, can we post it at the churches? Can we post it somewhere? They just, they're nervous about coming in and they're, and they're, they're not confident in themselves. That's what I hear from some of our Portuguese translators. So we're working on that piece to get some people to have some confidence and work with Alessandra, who was just a part-timer last year and has built those skills up to really love her job. If she would be there 70 hours a week if she could, I have to send her home at five o'clock. But, and she's on at night with people, so any help we can get, I know I'm burning her out quickly. But it's, even in the sped population too, we're using her for meetings for our special ed students. So we do see that increase and it has been the last year and a half, two years, that it's, it's, it's more of our Portuguese students being enrolled at this point in time than our Spanish. Now, I'm not sure if it's just because of the situation of traveling. And the other ones that are coming, you know, they're coming through, but at the same time, I don't see that declining.
Okay, thank you.
Dean, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for the presentations. I can't, I, I speak for myself, but I think we as a school committee and the superintendent and all staff can't say it enough times and reiterate and restate that we want to leave as many options on the table. And I can, I could hear at the public forum, some of the parents speaking specifically to the concern of, of maybe us not being quite aware of some of the complications that families might be having. But I just want But I just want to make sure, I think it's the one thing, if we haven't agreed on everything, I think that's one area that we have agreed on, but that's something that we should restate and state. And I think, you know, as many times as the superintendent can put in a newsletter or an email or whatever. Because I, even today, I had not many, under five parents call me with that same concern, a grave concern, talking about health issues in their homes. And there are many, as an ethnic community here, there are many extended family members living with our schoolchildren and their parents. And so there's quite a concern. So I think we can't say that enough times. I could see the concern. And anyone wants to leave that meeting, this meeting tonight without those parents knowing that, you know, our plan from the beginning was always to be able to offer remote learning to those students who need it for whatever the reason might be. And then I just had just another question, which is, so our enrollment total, was it, what? And I think we talked about the enrollment being down in kindergarten. What is our enrollment at current?
Today, it's 5999.
So we're not off by that much at all then, right?
Not now, no. They, families have been coming in and coming in. And remember, some of these, so we have many families that are just home, they're remote, so they're not in our buildings. And so we're not off by much. We're coming back and we're coming back very strongly.
Because our next year's funding, as it states now, I mean, as it stands now, will be based on our enrollment. That's the way it is every year. Some community lost hundreds of students. And again, there's some, you know, there's some talk about holding harmless any loss in students, but it sounds like we're, we're holding, I mean, we were only over a little bit on, over a little over 6,000 at the beginning of the year. So you're saying that we haven't lost but under 50 students?
Yeah, 187. Yeah, we were down 187 for funding this year. 100 being just kindergarten.
That was from between last year and this year.
October 1, yeah.
So if they don't hold us harmless, if that, if they change things and they don't hold us to those, to that loss, then we'll be okay. If they do, then obviously, you know, 12,000, whatever the amount is that we get for funding, we'll lose that. But I think the pressure is on, and I think I met with mayors last week, and, you know, our thing is we're going to keep the pressure on the whole harmless. Because, you know, if you're living in a very rural section of the state, you probably didn't lose anybody. The difference is very dense here, you know, 26 square miles and, you know, 43,000 to 45,000 people that live here. So it makes, it's a big difference. So, okay, that is just my question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I wanted to thank all the presenters. It was extremely helpful, and we appreciate everyone's hard work. The school district has really worked hard to cover all their bases and to keep the public and the committee informed. So thank you. I don't have any specific questions because I think everybody asked all my questions that I was going to ask. The only thing that I would suggest in this really, as we were talking about sort of school choice, on our next school committee agenda needs to be our vote for school choice. So that families who don't currently live in the district, if we need to make a decision whether we're accepting that or not. So that needs to be on our agenda. All right, thank you. Yep.
Can I just ask one more question? I missed it. When, I don't know if it was James or Renee, had something to the effect that there was 29 different languages so far in the school district. How does that compare with other school districts?
That's a good question. Around us, I think that we're comparable to Fitchburg around those languages. I can't give you the exact numbers, obviously. But, you know, Lemonster is up and becoming a very diverse community. And even I've been here for 20 something years and the diversity has grown, but in the last five to 10 years, our diversity has even grown more. And I just think that we try to keep changing to meet that diversity. But it's getting a little bit more difficult in not having certain things. I think our technology has helped out greatly in this past year around our Google meets. Now, we figured out how to have them translate it so that even though I'm speaking in English at the ALPAC, they can see it in whatever language they would like. So they know what I'm saying. So we're not doing the translations through all three of us doing the same thing. So I think as we move forward, you know, we're going to keep trying to figure out how to make them be accessible to anything that we do moving forward, whether it's our Zoom meetings and our Google Meet meetings. We really want them to be part of our community and, because they're important to us. So we're going to keep working on it, Ronnie.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just, I, you know, it's like I circled it and I, I guess the devil in me want to know, what was the percentage increase, you know, with because you were saying that three main languages beside English is Spanish, Portuguese, and TWE.
Yes.
What's the percentage growth that you get? Do you have that?
So our Spanish has stayed status quo, and that's about 68% of us. And our Portuguese is right behind there. Our TWE is literally only 79, 79 students. So that's about, you know, 1.5%. Otherwise, our 29 languages might be one or two, which is maybe a family comes in from a different country. So those are very minimal percentage-wise. But our top three are those three languages. And then that we're, but we have availability of things, like if you look at our website, anything we have is available in Mandarin. It's available in those languages so that we can make sure that, even if it's only one family, that we are meeting the needs of their, of what they need.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. I can also scan you the breakdown of the different languages and literally how many kids are in each language.
Yeah, that, for the next, well, through Eileen or through Paula, if it's possible, just just so, you know, just so we can have an idea, you know, because it's always what we don't know that haunts us.
Yes, I know. And I, like, you know, I'll tell you, we had our first ALPAC just advisory meeting the other day. And just that the team they have there, and they were really excited that we were able to communicate in English and everyone was looking at it in their own languages, and they were texting me all night long saying, this is awesome. So the more that we get them and share the technology with them, which we've been trying to do between our parent liaisons, our ESL teachers are doing a great job with that, and our kids are showing their parents. So that open communication is just going to have to keep growing, and we're going to just need to make sure that we're doing it so they feel part of our community.
Thanks, Renee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the approval of minutes for the January 19th meeting. Could I have someone make a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments, submissions, or errors? All right, having none, we're going to do a voice vote. Ron?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And good job, Chris. No corrections or admissions. So that's awesome. We'll move on to subcommittee reports. Mike, is there a finance subcommittee report?
Yes, finance met tonight at 6:00. We reviewed warrants. We have some warrants to approve. We reviewed financial reports. It was just a quick business meeting to cover those things. Finance will also be meeting again a week from Wednesday on March 10th at 5:30 to continue the discussions about next year's budget. Yes, I'll go ahead and do the warrants now. We reviewed the following warrants from the general fund. Warrant 31 totaling $3,822,534.93. Warrant 32 totaling $3,440,721.39. Warrant 33 totaling $1,814,650.46. And warrant 34 totaling $274,705.82. We also have warrants from grants and revolving. Warrant 31 totaling $174,097.93. Warrant 32 totaling $79,287.23. Warrant 33, $144,398.55. And warrant 34 totaling $228,795.69. Finance reviewed and voted to approve those, so I make a motion that we approve those warrants as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody have any comments or questions before we take a vote? Having no one come forward, it'll be a voice vote. Ron? Ron, you're muted.
Yeah, yay. Sorry.
Brandon?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Anything else, Michael, to report?
Just, we reviewed the financials. We have just over a million dollars of expenses that have been paid out of the general fund but are grant-eligible. So there are grant payments to reimburse the general fund pending. Once those are made, we'll have about a $433,000 balance available in their expenses. And of course, we still have a significant balance available in wages and salaries. Some of the positions that we talked about, that were posted, that we talked about at our last meeting have been filled, but there are more still posted. And we have the funds to pay for those if they, as soon as we can find people hired.
All right, great. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'm done.
All right. Ron, was, I don't believe there's been any policy meetings?
There's been no policy meeting. Next one, I think, is the one coming up.
Yes.
And that's it.
Okay, and I did request that the policies that we did review and update be presented at our next school committee meeting for the first reading.
Right.
All right. Action items, we, superintendent have the calendar to vote on? Yes, this is the calendar for the FY '22 school year. We are looking for you to give approval, to push it out. So can I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the calendar as proposed.
Thank you. Melissa, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
So I just, I know, I noticed that we're, we have the first day for teachers scheduled for August 30th and the first day for students the very next day, August 31st. And if I understand, I believe we did that this year, but in the past, there have been two days for teachers before the first day for students.
Yes.
So I'm just curious about that. I know I heard from some teachers that they expected to have one day of meetings and then one day to get their classrooms ready, but only ended up with one day. So I'm just curious about the
So they, this decision had come back from conversations we had had over years, teachers saying they just, they wanted to get their students in for a max in a week instead of having them for three days or two days. And that they prefer to spread the professional development days out throughout the year instead of having two front-loaded right off the bat. So it's, you have a dozen, right? Yeah. Dean, did you have a question or comment?
Just to make sure that we're not scheduling any religious holidays. Last year, we had a special meeting the same day as a religious holiday. I just want to make sure we double and triple check that to make sure that we're not in conflict. I'm not sure if the days, those religious days change the date or if it's done by week, but whatever it is, can we just make sure that we're not conflict?
Christine? All right, thank you. So we have a motion in a second. All those do a voice vote, obviously, since we're remote. I'm Ron.
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries. We're now on to new and old business. We have the HR report. Those are, the HR and the enrollment is just the latest update for your perusal. Excellent. I have just a couple of things that we do need to, which we, for whatever reason, didn't get a chance to last meeting, but we do need to just declare any conflict of interest. So I'll go first, just to let folks know that my husband occasionally does the scorekeeping for various sporting events from the high school. Isabel?
Yeah, so my mother is a kindergarten teacher at Francis Drake, and my sister was just actually hired to be a teacher at Northwest. And I have personally disclosed those at the city clerk's office as well.
Anybody else have anything they need to disclose? Peter?
Yeah, I just have a temporary one, will actually go away at the end of this month. Right now, I work part-time at an auto parts store that occasionally sells parts to the CTI auto body and mechanic program programs. So just, I can't sign warrants when they come up for the auditors.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any conflict of interest that we need to disclose? Ron, do you? Are you?
Well, my son was providing water to the teens, but he hasn't done that this year because of things been happening, but he had been doing that in the past. And I already declared that at City Hall, City Clerk's Office prior to.
Awesome, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we did do that publicly because we hadn't done that at this point. So, all right, thank you. Anybody else have any old or new business? Sue?
I just wanted to make a comment that Dick White passed away, and Dick was a big advocate for CTEI. And Ronnie, I think you remember Dick, don't you?
Yeah.
Dick White. Yeah, he passed away, and I just thought it might be appropriate for us as a school committee to send some kind of a note or something to the family. He was an active volunteer, plastics, whatever. And Dean, you knew him too, right?
Very much so.
Yeah. I was so, I mean, I just found out he passed away, but, you know, I just think that we as a school committee should do something, you know, because he was so active with CTEI. So I don't know what we normally do, but.
All right, we'll put it in the competent hands of Chris. Sue, if you have, or Dean, contact information for the family, because I don't recall who this person is, to make sure that we can get it over to Chris and we can send a grievance sympathy card
Okay.
on our behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Does anybody else have any? Isabel, and then Ron?
Yes, very quickly, I just wanted to throw out there, I know we did this around this time, last budget cycle, but I didn't know if this is something that the body would be interested in doing, but just advocating to our legislators in the House and Senate about a 1/6 implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. We were slated to get our share last year, which didn't end up happening in the budget process. And requesting a 1/6 implementation would mean an adequate funding for our low-income population as well as requesting that they hold districts, particularly like Lemonster, Harmless, with the October 1 numbers that they're using in their current budget. As Melanie stated in our finance meeting, it's an estimate of 1.2 million. We are missing out on with accounts that they are doing right now. So I'm just curious if anyone's interested in sending a letter. I'm happy to put it together. If no one else wants to do that, I'm happy to do that and make sure that I get signatures for it, but just wanted to throw that out there. make sure that I get signatures for it, but, um, just wanted to throw that out there and see if, that, if there's an interest, because the House, um, is, is talking budget, lately.
So, I would be perfectly fine with you drafting something, um, and then we can submit it to the committee, and everyone who's, um, you know, supportive of that can sign off on that. Um, is there anybody who disagrees with that? I think, you know, advocating for, uh, more money, uh, through the state is always, uh, something that would be in our best interest. All right, Ron, did you have something you wanted to discuss?
Yes, uh, that email that you sent to us, uh, before, uh, the, uh, oh, this evening, what time was it that I got it?
So, that's, um, for, I didn't, wasn't sure if Melanie had, uh, connected with everyone, that was for the...
No, no, and I, you know...
For the transportation.
Yeah, I, I'm asking to either, well, I'm asking that'd be part of the school committee meeting, you know, the, or just send it to us, in, in the spirit of transparency, so everybody can see what it is. And also, I know I'm on that, that committee, if we could have a hard copy of that, too, if it's possible, please. Instead of my downloading, so that way I can look over it and whatever needs to be, you know, looked at, there's those two things, the bus transportation and the bus contract. And I meant to ask, oh, what's her name? Melanie? Her insight on this, because I saw it came from, it came from her to, to you, I believe, right?
Yes.
And I just, you know, I'm just putting it out there. That's all. Go ahead. I'm talking too much already.
So, I'm not really sure if there's a, a question, Melanie came on board, um, and can answer any question, but, um, I, I had assumed that had gone out to everyone, it was a little remiss, so I did make sure that, uh, the folks on the transportation subcommittee, um, around the contract would have a chance to, you know, look at the information that Melanie was passing along. Um, and it is a subgroup, and when there is a final product, it's gonna come to the entire, you know, school committee.
Okay.
Melanie, I don't know if you have any updates or anything?
Yeah, it's, um, not necessarily an update, but, uh, we do want to get that posted sooner than later, to give everybody an opportunity, um, to bid, so, uh, I apologize, I, I thought I had sent it out to Eileen and had asked her to, um, kind of send it up to whoever else is, is on the committee, um, but I can send out a hard copy, Ron, that's not a problem.
Well, you know, you could, you know...
I just don't know who else is on the committee that I should be sending it to.
Sue, uh, Mike, Sue, and Ron are on the committee.
I guess my only, my only question was, did you have any, you know, you were saying how you, through, through the chair, you were saying that it has to be out sooner versus later, what's the drop-dead date that we have to have that done?
Uh, I don't have that answer for you, Ron, I can get that, I know that Greg over at the City Hall has been working with me, and has asked me several times if I had it ready. So, I know we, the changes that he's looking for are minute changes that would be happening for it, it would be similar to last year. So, I will ask him for that drop-dead date and I'll back to you.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Eileen, just on that same topic.
Yes.
I was supposed to be on that subcommittee and you didn't get that, can you just...
Okay, so I apologize, that was my omission.
Thank you.
Yep. So, uh, Melanie, it's, um, Ron, Mike, Sue, and Brandon.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for older new business? If not...
I have something.
Go ahead, um, Dean, and then Melissa.
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank, uh, DPW workers, um, forestry crews have been working down at Doyle Field to clear it. As you know, there's about foot and a half to two feet of hard, crusty, frozen snow, and, uh, you can't just go in and plow it out, it has to be methodically taken out by special equipment, and they did a beautiful job, if you would drive by there today, it looks like they're ready to play, uh, to play ball, and I think everyone knows, um, the, the Loomsdale High School football team, um, it will be practiced, started yet, it will be practiced very soon, and, uh, just wanna, a, a little kudos to our, uh, DPW and forestry crew down there.
Thanks, Dean, I know, uh, Paula was acknowledging that, uh, it looked wonderful at the very beginning, um, and didn't realize who had done it, so that was very nice, thank you. Melissa? Did you have something to, for...
Yeah, so, um, just really quickly, um, I attended the presentation the other night, and it was phenomenal, so I appreciate you having it, 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 it was really uplifting, and we really need more of that. So, I guess on the flip side is, um, I know the CPAC and, um, PAL have been doing some great, um, outreach over mental health, and, um, trauma, and depression, and all of the things so many people in our community are going through, especially this year, that if there is an opportunity to have a community ki- type of event that, um, addresses some of the concerns of anger and depression and frustration, if there's a presenter that could present to parents in the community right now, I think that would be unbelievable, just as we're seeing a lot of the sadness that people in our community are experiencing right now, too. And not have it under the, under the special ed, which, um, some people see as a stigma and shouldn't, but some people just don't look at it because they don't see themselves as needing special ed services.
All right, thank you. Um, just, if no one else has anything to, under new or old business?
Eileen, I, we have, uh, one important piece of old business remaining, um, last meeting, we had a contract proposal presented to us that we need to approve for, uh, financial services from CLA, um, which we did not vote on last time because we were gonna give people time to look at it. So, to remind everyone, uh, our business office is short-staffed, there is a need to, um, review how we're keeping track of student activity fees and get those into MUNUS, and get central office control over that, so it can be part of our financial reports. The proposal is to, um, have a person, uh, from CLA do that, we had the contract in front of us, so I would like to make a motion that we approve that contract so that we can move forward with this important work.
Do I have a second? Ron, a seconding? Does anybody have any, um, comments or thoughts? And Michael, you're correct, we did table, uh, the discussion, the vote, um, till our next meeting. Sue, you had a comment?
I, yeah, I, I thought this was an audit request.
It's not an audit, this is, um, there, this is to come in and get a whole, right now, the student activity, all the student activity fees are being handled by a part-time person at the high school, is one of their responsibilities, so, um, that means, that's why, you know, we don't see that in our revolving fund report, because it's not really being handled downtown. We have a person in charge of that who I'm sure is doing the best that person can do, but probably isn't aware of all the regulations that probably apply to how that's supposed to be done. So, the, the proposal for the contract is to have someone come in and analyze what accounts we have, and make recommendations about what we should do to handle this properly. Um, and Melanie, um, we can talk, you can ask, we can get Melanie on if we want to say some more about what's going on, but what she explained is, you know, we'd like to get those into MUNUS, we'd like to make student activity, that funding, part of our financial report, so we can actually do our oversight like we're supposed to do, we want to make sure that we're actually in compliance with any rules about how it's supposed to be handled, so there's some work to be done, and we don't have, we don't have a person on staff to do it. So, it's, uh, the person we're talking about, I believe, is one of Sean's colleagues from his firm, with, if, if Sean had time, we could have him do it, and then we wouldn't need a separate contract, but we're having a second person do the job, you need a, a contract per person, so that's, that's what was put in front of us. Uh, there was some concern last time about the, um, potential total cost, um, we don't anticipate that it will cost, the contract was written that we, um, would be able to pay this person up to a limit of $50,000, we don't anticipate it costing that much, but the trick is, if you need services and you've hit that maximum, it's complic-, it becomes a pain, it's complicated to then, you have to go through the process again to pay them more. Uh, the purchasing agent actually suggested maybe we should go higher, but we felt that 50 would be plenty, and we do have, we have room in the expenses budget to afford this. So, that's what it's about.
So, so my only question...
We are expecting...
Oh.
Go ahead.
No, my, my question was, so you wanna hire somebody to come in and tell us what we need to do? And then, what happens? We don't, you, you just said we don't have the staff to do it anyway. So, are we looking to hire a person to do this? I, I, like, I'm not following what you really wanna do. It sounds like we don't have, we don't have, we don't have our ducks in a row for this, you know, for student activity, so we wanna hire a company to come in and tell us what to do, but then, what happens? Who's gonna follow through with that?
So, Melanie, might have an answer?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Melanie.
I apologize, I apologize for my internet, it's slow, because the wind up, up in my hilly house is crazy right now. But, to try and explain this, it's, we're so far behind on the keeping, the bookkeeping of it, that once somebody comes in and catches us up, then we would be able to maintain it ourselves. I hope that went through.
Did.
It's essentially the same thing we did with athletics several days ago. We had someone, similar situation, um, we had a review of... Oh, no, I'm frozen.
We can hear you, Mike, go ahead.
So, I mean, it's, we did a similar thing with athletics, I was, before I was on the school committee, but we had an outside group come in and review the athletic fees and the funds for that, and they made quite a number of recommendations that the school department and school committee adopted, and so now we have, you know, that's in our revolving fund, uh, report, we have, we've been able to keep up with that, once we did things the way they told us to do. Well, I see this as the same thing, they're gonna come in and figure out what we have and what we should be doing, and, um, I anticipate we'll be able to, and, we will of course have to decide, they will make recommendations, we'll have to decide to implement them, I assume that, I expect we'll probably take most, if not all, of the recommendations, and we'll be able to do this properly going forward. We have also posted, um, a position for the business department, you know, we, we promoted Melanie and didn't replace what she used to be doing, and now we've, that's the one we posted, right, is what you used, your former title, Melanie, so, we will hopefully be hiring someone soon. So, again, we will be in a better position to keep track of these things going forward.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. Ron?
Yay.
Brandon? Brandon, you're muted?
Sorry, yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Thank you, Mike.
And when they, when they're done, can they get a re, give us a report of what they, what work they performed? This is a lot of money, no matter which way you dice and splice this thing, it's a lot of money, and it's for student activity fees. This isn't even a, a, this isn't even an audit, or whatever it is that you wanna call it, um, of the whole schools, of the whole school system, this is one account, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the scope of work as they finish it, in other words, whatever the work was that they performed, what they found, I think, yeah, we should get a report after this, and, and so that, in that, uh, capacity, I'll vote for it, yes, but under those conditions.
All right, that makes reasonable request. All right, is there anything else, under new and old business? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make...
Sue, and then Ron, we'll second it.
Yep.
Um, voice vote, Ron?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
And I'll be a yay. Thank you, and good night to everyone.
Stay safe, people.
Bye.